And I realize now, there we go. I realize now that I made a mistake in not recognizing how important the playground was to many of the families that had been utilizing it over the last 20 years. And to be frank, is when I got a phone call from my daughter mid-afternoon today that it finally, and she expressed to me her friends that had contacted her and told her, not that they object, they knew the playground was coming down, but they would have liked to have had a chance to visit with their children before it was dismantled. And so that it was incumbent upon me, when I found out last week that Monday was going to be the day they were going to be dismantling the playground, to have said, let's hold off, let's make sure people have an opportunity to visit, similar to what we did with the elementary school. We gave everyone the opportunity to go visit the elementary school before it came down. And the same respect should have been accorded to those that held the playground as an important emotional part of raising their children. So I offer my apology. It was incumbent upon me, as chair of this board, to have asked for that to happen. It did not. I take full responsibility for the failure. And I hope going forward that I will be more cognizant of this sort of thing and make sure that it doesn't happen again. With that, we'll move to citizens' participation. This is the moment in our meeting, we allow 10 minutes that we set aside for citizens to speak to the board. We ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes in order to give other citizens the opportunity to speak, was there anyone that wanted to speak this Name and identify yourself, please.
I'm Jen Bogart, 116 Cranberry Road. I'm a member of the Carver Planning Board, but I'm speaking as myself tonight. Before I start, I appreciate your apology, but I would like to speak to the point on the playground as well. I've prepared a statement and I've clocked it, and it is less than three minutes. So my then-five-year-old came with me to the meeting about the playground that was held here in the basement many months ago. She was the only child in attendance in a contentious room filled wall-to-wall with adults, and she had the courage and conviction to raise her hand and speak her mind on the idea of a new playground. My daughter and I also attended almost every meeting the Recreation Committee had involving the new playground. On our way to one meeting, she said to me, "I'm probably going to be the only kid there, Mom. Even if there are no kids there, the committee and the people should do the right thing for us kids. At least I get to be there for the kids that don't get to go to the meeting tonight, Mom." Those common sense ethics came from a five-year-old. When I found out the playground was being torn down yesterday, I immediately started to think how I would tell my daughter. The child who represented so many more at all those meetings. The child who counted on having one last time to play at the playground before it was torn down. The child who was at a meeting when someone said the playground wouldn't be torn down until at least the beginning of October. My child and I are not alone in our disappointment and distrust regarding this matter. Some of the comments made on social media yesterday that I would like you to hear include the following. "I was supposed to take my son after school. He's autistic and going to have a complete meltdown. Thanks for the warning." "There should have been more notice because kids need time to process." "Thankfully, I brought my little guy yesterday. I had no idea they were taking it down." "My son just cried coming home from preschool." "Wait till the buses roll by and they see it." "My son's well aware and constantly wants to know when the playground is closing. I've been telling him exactly what we were told." "The town made me a liar to my kid because they can't be honest with the people they work for." In my opinion, the most eloquent comment made yesterday was, "What a slap in the face. It feels like punishment and a ha-ha, I win attitude." "Clearly, there's no care or concern for any of the children in this town, never mind being honest with any of the people that live here. The kids all deserved a chance to attend one last time and their parents the opportunity to explain to their kids it was actually their last time there." "Everyone knew what the playground meant to our kids. To take it away like this without any notice is shameful and honestly disgusting." And lastly, the comment, in my opinion, that says it all pretty succinctly is, "This really sucks, but honestly, it's like the least surprising news ever." So to every child who was bullied yesterday by the decision to take your playground away without notice, I just want you to know, not every grown-up is like that. Thank you.
And I'll just repeat that I accept full responsibility for not having done the right thing and given the opportunity for parents and families to have had a last chance to visit the playground. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak this evening? All right, we will move on then to a celebration of an Eagle Scout project. We have Fredrick Dahl with us, and he wants to speak about improvements on Savory Avenue. Please step up and identify yourself, please.
Thank you.
Peter, can you get an angle on this with the camera?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Hello, my name is Fred Dahl. I'm 16, and I am a resident of Carver. I go to Old Colony at this point. I'm a life scout, and I got a paper to pass to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Fred.
So my main thing for my Eagle project is fixing up the gardens, which I've driven by multiple times, and they could look better. What I'm planning on doing is re-mulching, cutting back overgrown, overgrowth, and also I'm going to transplant some stuff if I need to. Another thing I'm going to put in there is, if you can see on my board, there's, the signs now are just made out of plywood that are placed in the rocks. I'm planning on, at my school, I do machine and tool, and I was planning on remaking the signs with aluminum and pushing them into the rocks so you can actually tell that they're a new sign and that it doesn't break over a long time. Last final thing I'm planning on doing is building a bench that will be on the south side near King Richards, and it's going to be facing down the whole length of Savory Ave. so you can get the whole thing in view. And that's my main project.
I know the folks on this side can't see you very well, but any questions?
We heard you.
Questions from the board?
No.
No? I think it's a great project. You don't, I don't think you need our permission to move forward, but you certainly have our blessing.
Yeah, I'm going to start this in the spring because of all the garden work, because that would be the time, because I have to pass all the papers into the Eagle Board and get it from, well, get it passed through that, get it back, and get letters of recommendation from teachers, coaches, and leaders. So that's what I'm looking forward to, starting in the spring of 2020. And as soon as I get it passed by the Eagle Board, I'm going to start on the signs.
Well, it's an excellent project, and I think the entire town will be appreciative to see Savory Avenue restored. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Could we get a letter written up by the board for us to submit to his Eagle book?
Oh, absolutely.
That way that he knows that we're in support of this project.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. All right, if you could just make sure that we have your address?
Yeah.
Do we have it? Okay, wonderful. We will get that off to you. And again, congratulations, and congratulations, Mom and Dad, for this effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is the Carver Marion Wayham Regional Refuge District Director update by Jeff Osich, who is it, Osich?
Osuch.
Osuch. Executive Director of the Refuge District. Thank you for coming in tonight. Bob and Mr. Milonowski, but especially Bob, has been keeping us well-informed as to what's been going on and the hard decisions that are coming up and what's facing us down the road and trying to keep residents up to speed on how this may end up impacting them, both in terms of disposing of their trash and the expense related to that. So I appreciate you being here to provide this update, so I'll turn it over to you and ask you just to do what you can to, you know, help us and the rest of the town understand what we're facing.
Okay, well, thank you first of all for inviting me, and I'll give you a summary, but I would suggest that if you have questions, even though I may be speaking, I'd be happy to, if you want to interject and have a dialogue back and forth, because obviously there's a lot of topics that we're going to try to cover in the next 20 minutes or 30 minutes or so. I began working for the district back in January, and I've learned a lot in the last couple of months as to what's transpired over time. Just as a quick summary, the Carver Marion Wayham district came into initial existence back in 1973, and then I think the milestone of the meetings with Energy Answers, or currently known as CMAS, began in around '82 and '83. There was an agreement signed between the district and CMAS regarding the Carver landfill. And that agreement basically gave the now's of Carver Marion Wayham free trash disposal at the landfill because it was taken over by CMAS primarily for ash and MSW that they would dump there. So you've had the luxury, if you want to call it that, for the last 20-some-odd years of having free trash disposal. Actually, I should say it's probably closer to 30-something years, free trash disposal. And unfortunately, that will end once the landfill closes. It's projected right now December of 2020. So approximately, if you want to call it 15, 16 months, that agreement ends. At that time, the free disposal costs that not only have you had for your trash from collections within the three towns, but also the district, which operates two transfer stations, one on Benson Brook Road in Marion and one on Route 28, just in Rochester, just past the intersection of 58 and 28, which has had free trash disposal, will also terminate. As you're mostly, most of you are aware, the Route 28 transfer station has been operated by CMAS, and their employees have been maintaining that since the agreement back in 1983, actually 1997, I believe it was. The Benson Brook facility has been operated by the district with two employees at the present time, but the costs for operation of the Benson Brook facility has been covered by CMAS. Approximately 95% of all costs have been reimbursed. So as it exists at the present time, each of the towns, and I'm going to throw Rochester into the mix because that's another community, it also has been provided services by the two transfer stations. Each of you as towns have had a fee that you've charged for stickers. For example, Carver is 50, Wayham is 40, Rochester is 20, and Marion is only charged $10 for a sticker. Those fees have been, the money that's been collected from those fees has gone into the coffers of each individual town. And the reason primarily was that the district didn't need the money because of the fact that all its costs basically were covered by CMAS. Obviously, that going forward is going to be a big issue as to who's going to cover costs and what expenses are going to be borne by, obviously, the ratepayers who are going to use those two facilities, or if there's only one facility, which is being discussed by the Board of Directors. At the present time, we've been taking inventory of who is coming to which facility. Just for some background information, it appears that the majority of the vehicles that go into Benson Brook come from Wayham, which is probably no big surprise. If you're talking about 64, 65%, about 30% come from Marion into the Benson Brook facility, which is in Marion. About 2% to 3% from Rochester, and less than 1% from Carver. When you look at it from the other side and you look at Route 28 facility, it's very similar in the sense that Wayham is about 64, 65%. In this case, it's Carver that's around 28 to 30, and then Rochester, 3%, roughly, and then Marion, less than 1%. So you can easily see that the residents of Marion frequent the Marion facility and the residents of Carver frequent the Route 28 facility, where the residents of the town of Wayham kind of split between the two facilities with roughly the same ratio. When you look at the total vehicles, it's about a 60/40 split, maybe 61/39 in favor of Route 28. So 61% of all vehicles approximately go to the Route 28 facility. And of that number, we're talking in the neighborhood of, in the summer months, because we've only got data for Route 28 for about eight weeks of checking vehicles and stickers. We've been about 2,800 to 2,900 vehicles a week that go into Route 28. And in the Marion facility, which we've been keeping records since January, it'll vary from the winter months in the 11 to 1,200 vehicles to in the summer months between 18 and 1,900. So you can see that you've got, on average, between the two facilities in the peak summer period, somewhere in the neighborhood of 4,800, maybe as much as 5,000 vehicles between the two facilities. So one of the problems that obviously has to be addressed is the cost of trash disposal in those two facilities. Right now, between the two facilities, last year in calendar 18, there was approximately 7,700 and some odd tons of trash that was disposed of at CMAS at no cost. In the future, that cost is probably going to be around $75 to $80 per ton. If you do the math quickly, that's roughly $600,000 for trash disposal if the signage remains where it is.
Excuse me, and that's just the cost of the trash disposal, doesn't take into account the infrastructure and employees and what?
Correct. And on top of that, you also have recycling costs, which would have to be added, which are actually more expensive than trash. And that's probably between the two facilities, approximately another $100 to $120,000. So you can see right now that the costs are in excess of $700,000 to get rid of trash. And that's going to have to do, as you mentioned, with dealing with employees, insurance, mechanical cost repairs, equipment, and so forth. So when you look at the total package, you're probably looking, if you were running one facility for five days a week, you would need to spend round figures with trash and recycling costs and all the other costs associated, somewhere around 1.3, 1.4 million. So that is about the magic number that would have to be attained in some fashion in order to offset those costs. So the discussions that have been ongoing by district members over the last few months, and at the last meeting in the month of August, there was a vote taken to establish a fee for January 1st of 2020. Now, this is a year prior to the closure of, I shouldn't say the closure, before the termination of the current agreement with CMAS to institute a fee of approximately $125 per sticker. That sticker fee will be collected, sold at the individual town halls, but the money will be going to the district, because the district has some decisions it's going to have to make. And those decisions range from, are you going to run one or two facilities? If you try to run two facilities, obviously, you're not going to do it five days a week in both facilities as is currently being done. If a decision is made to only run one facility, the preference is the Route 28 facility. And if you do operate out of the Route 28 facility, you're going to have to expand that facility in order to take the additional volume of vehicles that would be going to the one facility, which means you'd end up adding compactors at that facility and recycling containers, et cetera. So the operation costs are around 1.3, 1.4 million projected for one facility, but to upgrade that facility and to bring it into compliance, we'd probably be talking with new equipment and so forth, $600,000, $700,000 in addition. So additional fees that would be charged would have to offset those costs. At the present time, to operate a facility, if you go back to what I said a minute ago, 1.3 to 1.4 million, depends on how many stickers you sell. And the projection right now is, even though there's approximately between the three communities, and if you add in Rochester, it sells approximately 1,300 stickers, there's a total of 11,000 stickers that are being sold between the four communities. Now, the number is somewhat distorted, I think, primarily by Marion, because their sticker is a combination beach and transfer station sticker. So with a population of a little less than 5,000 people, they sell over 3,200 stickers. So the likelihood is that there's multiple stickers sold per family. I doubt very much in the future that homeowners are going to be willing to pay $125, which will be, will be in effect as of January 1st of 2020, or more likely, if you're looking at it strictly as a fee-based system, the sticker would have to be somewhere in excess of $250, closer to $300, if you had approximately 4,600 stickers sold between the four communities. Other discussions that are ongoing is to go into a bag system, so have a fee per sticker. So for example, if the sticker fee was $125, every container of trash that would be brought to the transfer station, or both if it was two that existed, would have to be brought in a special bag, which you would buy at a supermarket or hardware store or wherever. And those bags would be paid for by the homeowner, and obviously, the more trash you bring, the more you would pay for bags, and obviously, the district would receive some of that money back from the stores that would be selling those bags, as the district would provide the bags on a consignment-type basis. So in general, these are some of the issues that are ongoing and some of the tough decisions that are going to have to be made in the coming year, as to where the trash is going to go, if the district is still going to stay in existence for one, if it's going to operate one or two transfer stations, and if it's what the schedule will be and obviously what the fees will be. So that's a very quick summary of some of the things that are ongoing and some of the issues that are facing the district members and some of the tough decisions that are going to have to be made in the next six months or so.
And Bob had mentioned, I think, that there may be some deadlines to get feedback from the district towns about level of participation or planned, whether we plan to participate or not participate. Can you address that?
That, that question has been raised, if all the three towns or only two may be wanting to go forward into the future. It's an unknown at this point. There's been some discussion that Marion may or may not want to participate.
Didn't they go to town-wide trash pickup?
Marion has had town-wide trash pickup by their own employees. At the most recent town meeting, they voted to go private, and they did bid it out, and the low bidder was Waste Management. So effective, actually, they started in August. They were supposed to start September 1st, but they actually began in August because of mechanical problems with the trucks that the town of Marion had. So they are providing curbside collection, but they've always had curbside collection. It was only done by the municipal employees versus now private. But they've also added into the contract different items that would be picked up at their individual homeowners, such as bulky items, refrigerator stoves would be picked up. I believe the fee was $25. Right now, if you bring it to Benson Brook, it's $25 to bring it there, so you save the transportation. They're also going to have some leave-in yard waste collections. So in general, I think in the town of Marion, because of the system that they're operating or have operated in the past and will be operating in the future, the need for a transfer station is less than it is in Carver and Wayham.
Because Waste Management doesn't utilize the services. They take their waste elsewhere, don't they?
Waste Management could bring it to CMAS, but I understand they've been taking it to one of their own facilities.
Right, that's, because for instance, I have Waste Management here in Carver, and when you were talking about fees, I think I'm paying $280 a year. And they're really, you know, that my rate, we talk about what's going to happen to the rates for, you know, trash pickup and so forth. Since they aren't affiliated with any, with the local facility, then my rate really would, I would expect, other than whatever they might have for, you know, just inherent increases, my rate should be unaffected by whatever happens to the district.
Again, I don't know where Waste Management is taking the trash that's generated at Carver. I believe some of it is ending up in CMAS, at least based on the numbers that I've seen from CMAS. Because in Carver and in Wayham, you have five, four, five, or six different independent haulers that are going up and down all the streets, depending on who they have contracts with. And all those haulers that are going to CMAS, currently, yes, they are paying some type of a fee to the town, but the cost of trash disposal has been freight. So if you look at it from the standpoint, if nothing changes in the town of Wayham or in Carver, they charge some fee per ton based on numbers that CMAS gives back to the, to the local towns as to how many tons are brought. Those contractors will either have to negotiate independent contracts with CMAS at a fee probably greater than $75 or $80 a ton, or the town would have to become the sponsor for a primary hauler to bring it to CMAS at a negotiated price. Same with the town of Wayham. So Marion is a little different situation. They have a private hauler, and they have to designate where the trash is to go to within a 25-mile radius. And Marion, there's only really three facilities, CMAS, ABC, and the town of Bowen landfill. But Carver and Wayham have to make decisions similar to that as to what they want to do in the future. They could leave everything as it is in the private hauler. Will have to make some decisions as to what their fees would be, starting in January of 2021.
I'll have to follow up with Waste Management, because I called them when all this was going on, and they advised me that they have nothing to do with the district and that my fee should be unaffected by that. But again, these are the things we need to look into and find out about in terms of when we're making individual decisions as to what we're going to do going forward.
Mike is asking about the town of Marion. From what I understand, what Marion did was, they went to town meeting, the different options that they gave to the town residents was either to buy new equipment at X amount of dollars per truck, or go to an override to pay for the contract for trash collection curbside, and that includes recycling collection also. They, I understand, when the new fee goes into effect with CMAS, assuming they go to CMAS, will also go back to town meeting requesting an override to cover those expenses.
So where are we at then?
Well, I think in general, there's a committee meeting actually in this room tomorrow night at 5:00. The district board members, which each town has three, is kind of in a situation where they have to stop making some decisions. If the intent is to operate one transfer station, let's assume it's Route 28, there's going to have to be some decisions on how to expand Route 28's transfer station, and obviously, that work would have to be accomplished sometime during 2020. And there are costs associated with access roads and additional containers and so forth. As far as the fee for next year, that's already been voted, $125 per sticker. But looking at 2021, the decision's going to have to be, is it going to be a sticker with bags? And homeowners buy bags to dispose of whatever they want to dispose of at a transfer station, or is it going to be a flat fee, which would be much higher than $125, probably closer to $250 or $300, depending on how many stickers are sold. You have to cover your operating expenses and your disposal costs based on who wants to participate.
And that's for the privilege of people to taking their own trash?
Correct. So there are...
Bob and I have talked about, the problem is that if I can have my trash picked up for $280 versus paying $250 to take it myself for the extra 30 bucks, I might just decide that, and these are numbers you're not going to know until you almost put it in play.
Yeah, and I think an issue that, when you compare the two transfer stations, I mentioned the district is operating the one on Benson Brook. There are rules in place at Benson Brook. You can't bring refrigerators or stoves or TV set without buying a sticker at one of the three towns for $25, and that sticker has to be attached before you bring it. Unfortunately, the facility on Route 28 is, there's no rules. It's been operated by CMAS, will operate until the end of 2020. If you go to Route 28, you'll see everything from mattresses to couches to whatever being brought there and disposed of. When we, if you look at the two facilities, every vehicle at Benson Brook is checked in, we have the sticker number or the license plate number, and in some cases, what type of product they're bringing. Is it trash? Is it recyclable? Is it both and so forth? At Route 28, from the eight weeks of information that we were able to collect through a security company, which CMAS was willing to pay for, they initially authorized me to have a company for three weeks, and we expanded it to eight after they saw how well it worked. We found just in the first week, 221 vehicles going into Route 28 that either had expired stickers, no stickers, or actually were coming from other communities, such as Middleborough, Lakeville, and other places. So there's no secret that in the future, if the district is to continue operating Route 28 transfer station, what people have become accustomed to is not going to be in existence any longer. There's going to have to be rules and regulations, and only certain products are going to be brought, and it's going to have to be a residential facility, not, in some cases, commercial waste being brought to Route 28. And what's interesting is, we had eight weeks, starting in the middle of May to the middle of July, which we had a security person at the gate to check every vehicle and every sticker. And like I said, it started with 221 vehicles being turned away in the first week, and the eighth week, we're down to 24. But the volume of vehicles also dropped off by 300 to 400 vehicles in that time period. There was a gap. We put a security person back there the last week of August. We were back up to 2,900-plus vehicles, and we turned away 64 that week for the same reasons. So... So people know that they can get into the, into the Route 28 facility with almost anything and dispose of it. Those things are not going to happen in the future. So reality is that the residents, I don't care which town we're talking about, but primarily obviously Carver and Wayham, are going to have to follow the same rules that everyone else follows at other transfer stations. You're going to have to either implement some type of a fee system for items that don't, are not collected normally and those fees are going to have to be paid by the homeowner or whoever is bringing the item there. There are facilities in other locations, Hanson just installed a kiosk where people actually drive up to the kiosk at the front entrance and insert their credit card to pay for whatever they're bringing. So I'm talking refrigerators, stoves, whatever, there's a certain price, TV sets, computers, whatever, propane tanks, et cetera. All that stuff has been free simply because of all the costs have been basically offset by CMAS, which again, that luxury goes away at the end of 2020.
Other questions in the board? Bob?
So one of the biggest issues in prices is how much does it cost to get rid of per ton, all this stuff? And we have high amounts of trash per ton at the Route 28 facility right now. And just going there today, I saw numerous vehicles that were commercial, were guys that work in construction, trailers load of debris, wood, metals, you name it. So I mean...
So they were illegally dumping there?
Well, no, because CMAS doesn't give two halves for dilly squat of what you throw in there because they burn it all. They don't care. But when the district takes over, that's got to end. No, you're not going to be able to do it. All right? That's what's going to happen. So the tonnage could actually go down and be cheaper than what we are expecting right now because we're using the high numbers of what we already know for figures coming in. So depending on what you go, I mean, but there's so many different other possibilities to expand by allowing other items there that other towns do. But we have to start small. Just get really good at conserving and recycling and hopefully people just follow the rules that go in there. But I mean, I did see one article that actually it listed a figure of 1.8 million to run the facility and I was kind of concerned about that number because that was substantially higher than what we had already had discussed at one of our, at our meetings. So I just wanted to, it was good that you came here and took the numbers and...
I don't know where the 1.8 million came from. I don't, I don't have any knowledge of that, but I don't know if someone is out there trying to say, well, if you run two transfer stations, you need obviously personnel and different equipment. They're not the same. If you go to Benson Brook, they use trailers, haul the trash with trailers at Route 28 as compacters. So just for sake of examples, the month of August, Route 28 had 478 tons of trash that was taken to CMAS and Benson Brook had 228 tons. So roughly 50% less at Benson Brook than at Route 28 in the month of August. Yet the volume of vehicles was roughly 60, 40. So what it's showing you is that on the per-vehicle entering Route 28 is a higher amount of pounds of trash being brought. And I think it's associated with what Bob just mentioned, and that is the fact that you've got commercial waste ending up at Route 28, which is only supposed to be residential. So there are contractors in the local area, no matter what town they're from, who have gotten stickers, obviously, and are going in and some, it's a supplement to their business if you want to call it that. They maybe charge on the homeowner and then disposing of it for free.
Other questions in the board? Mr. Dunham?
Okay, you're noticing you're estimating, you know, 4,600 stickers that you would need. Have you, how fast could you adjust rates or whatever if, say, you only get 4,000 people asking stickers, so they don't want to pay that high price?
Well, I think that's one of the things we're going to learn very quickly come in late November and December because stickers are going to have to be in place by January 1st. It's going to be a CMW Regional Refuge District sticker, not the town stickers that have been sold in the past. So it's going to be one sticker sold by all the towns. We'll know which town because we're going to put on the sticker or letter such as C for Carver or M for Marion, et cetera, that they're coming from or the sticker is sold. But the reality is with the $125 fee starting January 1st, we'll know roughly January 1st or the following week, how many stickers we sold for the current year of 2020. The issue is going to be '21 when CMAS is gone and the reimbursement for operating expenses disappears. So we have that year to make adjustments. And like I mentioned, is, the 125 is just to cover operating expenses. It's not to cover expenses for trash disposal. So hypothetically, the number that was estimated was 4,600. As your question came up, if it's 4,000, then obviously the sticker fee would be greater. If it's 3,500, it'd be a fair amount higher, another $100 round figures. So if it's over 4,600, if it's 5,000 stickers, then obviously the fee would be lower. But those adjustments or estimates are going to have to be made prior to this time next year so that when the sticker is printed for 2021, whatever the fee associated with that sticker would be known, be it it's 250, 270, 300, whatever. Or unless the district decides it wants to have a flat fee for a sticker to cover operating expenses and the trash disposal costs would be covered by some type of a bag fee and that those numbers would go up and down based on the number of bags that are sold. That revenue would offset strictly the trash and recycling costs.
I'm just afraid you're going to find, you know, the 125 probably won't be a problem, but you start talking 250, 260, 280, people are going to do some shopping around and you may find yourself losing a lot of people that are going to say, to heck with it, it's not worth it to pay that much money and have to go all the way down there when I can just have it picked up on my curbside.
But, but the difference is obviously if they're not bringing the trash or the recyclables to the transfer station, then we're not paying the cost of disposing of those items. So hypothetically, if the operational portion, the labor, equipment, repairs, insurance, et cetera, is equivalent to roughly $125, that would be covered, be it you get 4,000 stickers sold, 5,000 or 3,000. The homeowner is bringing trash and recyclables. If they're going to have it picked up at their home, the district is not going to have that amount, that amount of tonnage that has to be disposed of.
So would the cost come down then?
The operational expenses, depending on how many...
No, I mean, what, because you guys are going to have to calculate, I imagine, how much it's going to cost your trash. You're going to have to estimate how much trash you're going to take in to set up a contract to have that trash disposed of, correct?
The, well, we don't have a contract in place.
No, but you will, I would imagine.
Yes, and that, I can't say because, exactly because we don't have a contract in place, but the gist of what's being discussed in negotiation is strictly the tonnage that we would collect would be brought to wherever the facility we sign a contract with. So hypothetically, if it was 7,700 ton and the following year it was 6,000 ton, we're only obligated for the 6,000.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, and again, I've mentioned this to Bob, I get a sticker to, because I periodically clean out the attic or the garage or the backyard, but at $50, I'm willing to pay that. That goes to a couple of hundred dollars. I'm probably just going to call someone to come pick up my trash and not take it myself. So I don't know how many of the stickers constitute someone like myself that doesn't rely on it for weekly trash disposal, but that's also another element that I think we're really not going to know until we get the first year into this, what the actual numbers are going to be. Part of this is going to be looking at a crystal ball and doing, making the best educated guess we can.
And there's, you know, there's other options that potentially are out there. For example, one option is some facilities have gone to TV cameras. Every vehicle that comes into the facility, you go online and you input your information for your vehicle and so forth, and you pay online the fee, whatever it is. And as you come to the gate, the camera records if you're a paid person or not. So it becomes green, gives, and you can track how many trips somebody makes in a month or in a week. There's some communities that are now going into, you get 12 trips at no cost and then when you exceed 12, you now pay so much per trip additional. There's other options of putting a scale in and weighing every vehicle that comes in and then charging a fee, which obviously is time, time consuming. There's also the ability to scan stickers if you have a barcode on them that is a potential option to track how many vehicles are coming, you know, repeaters. And our contractors coming in, you know, two, three times a week because they're in some type of business even though they're not a commercial plate. Those are kind of things that are being discussed at the present time and all of them are going to have to be looked at in the next couple of months and decisions made during 2020 as to what the sticker is going to look like and how we're going to track who's coming and who's going starting in January of '21.
So essentially, sorry, go ahead, Mike.
Just a quick question. Thank you for coming and speaking with us tonight. You mentioned beyond 2020, the possibility of going to a bag system. Wouldn't, wouldn't the bag system allow you a lot more pricing flexibility? If you found you were short, you could raise that price? If you found you were too high, you could lower it? It would allow you to, a little quicker to react than the sticker system would?
Well, obviously you could, yes. Because the way the system would work, I believe, DEP right now has grant programs available for the district that could apply to initially purchase bags that would then be, you'd have to go out and find the stores, hardware, supermarkets, wherever that would be willing to sell and they get a percentage of each bag that they sell. Obviously, the more bags you sell, the more income you make, meaning the district would receive a percentage of that. So depending on the size of the bag, there's two different sizes. You could be, you know, 10 bags for $2 or it could be eight bags for $2 or $3. So you can collect that money. You would know in advance how many bags are being sold and if you have to make adjustments. But you've got to remember that the trash disposal costs, even though we don't have a contract in place, is a high number and that has an escalator each year, most likely a percentage escalator. So hypothetically, if you start at, say, $75, you could be 78, 81, something like that over the next few years. So the costs are going to continue to rise. I'm not saying that we know for sure, but I'm pretty confident with the landfills closing that still exist in this general area. Trash costs are going in one direction and that's straight up. And it wouldn't be surprising to see that approaching $100 a ton or greater. I can give you a live example. The city of Boston, which has multiple districts, just signed an agreement with CMAS earlier this year at $95 a ton. And that has nothing to do with transportation, that's strictly disposal cost. And that was a competitive bid against other major companies that were willing to take the trash.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for coming in. I know we'll probably be, Michael?
Jeff, could you talk about the Hazardous Waste Day?
Sure.
The change of location?
Yes. Some of you may recall that back in June, we had a hazardous waste day at the Highway Department Garage in Wayham. And we were inundated with approximately 370 cars were able to drop off whatever they brought. There was at least, I can't give you the exact count, when the police department shut down the line, there was over 50, probably close to 100 vehicles turned away. There were some unhappy residents because all the towns obviously could come to Wayham. I did go back to CMAS and again, this is an example, CMAS is paying the cost of the hazardous waste day. There was none held in 2018, which I think contributed part of the problem, but to the volume of vehicles that came on June 1st. I did talk to them. They are willing to finance another one in calendar 19. The date that was chosen was November 16th, which was a Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00. There will be two sites. Wayham hosted the one in June. There'll be one at Benson Brook Transfer Station in Marion. And the second one, which I understand is at the, is at the Highway Garage on Pond Street, Mike, in Carver, will be hosting on that day. So the residents of the towns of Carver, Marion and Wayham and also Rochester can go to either one of those two facilities on November 16th from 9:00 to 12:00. Just to give you an example, with the one that was held in Wayham, it was scheduled to go from 9:00 to 1:00. It was shut down by the police department at about 12:25, 12:30. They were able to average approximately 100 vehicles an hour that made it through, dropping off. So you had about 360, 70 cars that made it in, or pickup trucks. And by the time they packaged everything and we had the luxury in Wayham of being inside a garage, the Highway Garage, they were there till 9:00 at night sorting and separating. And they filled one trailer truck in equivalent to approximately three box six-wheelers. And it cost round figures with advertising, labor and so forth, just under $40,000, $37,800, I think it was the cost.
Jeff, were sending out notices for them?
There'll be notices as we did the last time. We're going to have to change the notice because the location changed, but that'll be finalized tomorrow night at the board meeting. And last time, we did bulk mailing to all the residents telling them what they can and cannot bring. I would encourage people to have propane tanks, fluorescent light tubes or bulbs or mercury thermostats or whatever, that all those type items are currently accepted at the transfer stations. So don't bring them to hazardous waste day. They were allowed in Wayham, but we're not allowing it because we can dispose of them in different fashions at a cheaper price. So the notice that'll be going out. And the other thing that we did experience in Wayham was an overabundance of waste oil. I'm afraid to say, I think contractors, people that run garages were filling five-gallon containers or whatever. So there's going to be a limit, and I believe the limit's going to be 20 gallons from any one person coming to the hazardous waste day. So November 16th from 9:00 to 12:00 at the two locations, Benson Brook and Marion and on Pond Street at the Highway Garage in Carver.
What do you want to add, Mr. Chen?
Yes, sir.
The agenda says it's salt shut out, or something like that.
Right, that's why they mentioned it's a change of venue.
We've changed the location.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in.
Mr. Chairman, one of the other...
Sorry, one last question.
One last thing is that with the hazardous waste day, if people are going to go, put it in a box that you don't need, it's quicker, they can just pick it up and take it away instead of having to individually take everything out of your box or your crate. Just get something that you don't care about, here you go, take it all and walk away.
Yeah, that's a good point. We had the problem in Wayham that people would bring totes. They had five-gallon containers or whatever and they wanted us to dump out the product and get the container back. And that obviously is time consuming. Obviously, after the initial few vehicles, everything was being offloaded, just put on the floor and the actual sorting and separation and pouring of liquids, et cetera. And if people would please, if they know what they're bringing, label, is it motor oil, is it antifreeze, is it a combination? Because it makes a difference as to what drum it has to be disposed of and obviously we're the end product. And everything has a chain of custody. So whatever drums are collected or boxes of products that are bagged and shipped off have to go to specified representatives of proper disposal and we have a chain of custody receipt that we get. So it's not dumping it in the woods or throwing it down the toilet or whatever. So if you have that ability to separate and bring it in a box or whatever, that you can leave with the product in it, it helps speed up the process.
Excellent. Thank you, Jeff. Again, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in.
And in the future, I mean, obviously with the, with the board's approval, once we have some fixed numbers and some better ideas, and I'm saying, you know, with the stickers being sold in late November and the month of December, we're going to know approximately how many people buy stickers. I realize it's going to be at the 125 figure, but it'll give us a good indication.
Some indication anyway, sure.
Just a quick question?
Yes.
For Carver residents, do they have to have a dump sticker to go to the hazardous waste day?
No, they don't have to have a dump sticker. There are two ways. Either you have to have a sticker which will record the number, which makes it easier, or you have to have a proof of residence. So be it as a tax bill, if you're a non, if you're a renter, some type of proof such as an electric bill or... as an electric bill or a telephone bill or something that shows you're a resident of whatever town you're claiming to come from.
Driver's license would work, too?
Driver's license would work, yes. But if, what we experienced, again, being June 1st, there were a fair amount of summer residents that have summer homes, be it in Wayham or Marion, maybe not as many in Carver, that showed up, and they were from wherever, Cambridge, you know, Worcester, New York City, wherever. And believe it or not, people were bringing their real estate bills, or, or electric bills or something to show that they had proof. There's only one person that I can think of, and I checked all 370 vehicles, that didn't have proof.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Great job.
Take care. I'll see you tomorrow. All right, and next we reach Select Board Update. One point of order that I should have brought up earlier is that the agenda does say that the meeting was going to start at 6:30. That was a typo. It should have said 7:00. So just for those of you that are sticklers, please note that it should have started at, it meant to say we started at 7:00. Select Board Update, I'll start with Mr. Belvin this evening.
Thank you. I'm going to probably be bringing this up over, but annual town meeting articles, i.e. petition articles, we'll need a date for that at some point when they need to be submitted in, but if people want to do articles, they should start getting ready now and be ready to submit them in. What I brought up in the past already has been if we want to start a beach committee or whatnot, I know I grew up in Pembroke and we had them. The tennis court removal, that should be on the radar, too. The Center Street issue with the illegal business going on, we'll get an update from that. Neuse's bylaw, I know the Board of Health is working on that. I'll send my little notes to them, just to let you guys know, if you have any issues, please bring them up to the Board of Health. Have we heard anything about the language for protecting our walking trails? I know that was one of the other things I discussed before, along with boat access. I'm just repeating stuff. One of the big ones is an update on the urban renewal plan. I think that's something we need to keep an eye on, what's going on. We already talked about the playground, I don't need to rehash that, just, we need to improve our communications with our public. The code of conduct, I'm not too happy with that, with the council on aging, I've been pretty vocal about that. I don't think it's right that we limit speech, especially being a town here, for senior citizens to be able to speak where they want to speak, and whatever the content of that speech is, should not be held against them or punished for it. Issue with the clerk's office staff, it looks a little bleak over there, like there's one less staff member there. I know she's new as a town clerk, but with elections coming up, I think we have to revisit having enough staff in there to do the job. The property auctions, that's something else that's going on for people, if you're interested in property that the town is going to get for auction here. I think it's the Zico's Group. And one of the questions I did have for the town administrator for this is, are we looking for back taxes on these properties? Or is this, we're going to waive the back taxes on these properties?
Nothing gets waived, Bob.
Nothing is waived, so they still have to pay the back taxes that's owed with the properties that whatever they bid for? That's a yes?
Yes.
Okay, a little bit of communication helps. And that's really it. Thank you very much. Nice event I went to on Constitution Day, so thanks, the committee, the Republican Committee that run that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn?
Really, the only thing I have tonight, this is hiring season for the Carver Fire Department. If you're wanting to go ahead and be part of a very strong organization, one that works their butts off of the town and does a tremendous job, if you want to be part of that team, go to the Station 1. Seven days a week, pick up an application. The applications have to be turned in by October 1st. And for those who are unfamiliar with the process, you fill out an application, then once all the applications are in, they'll set up a general knowledge test, and then depending on how you people score with that general knowledge test, they'll go through, they go through, the next step, they'll go through an interview process. Those who make it through the interview process then have to take a psychological test. They also have to take a state physical abilities test. And then depending on what kind of budget the chief has and the needs of the three companies, they'll choose people that have made it through that far to be conditional offers of employment. But then they have to go through what is basically a three-month recruit training class, starts usually the very end of January, goes to the middle of April, and basically we teach to the state standard, only with a little bit of Carver-centric on it, where they learn water holes, drafting, things like that. And then you become a member of the fire department. It's very rewarding, it's, you're not going to get rich with it, but also talk it over with your significant others, because it is going to be a big time commitment, especially during the recruit training phase. But I encourage anyone who's been even thinking about joining the fire department, head over to the station, ask for an application. If the deputies are around, or the chief, or, you know, stop by and ask them some questions about it, they'll be more than happy to talk to you.
Mr. Townsend?
Just a couple of things. Carver Cares is holding their third annual Candlelight Visual commemorating those who have lost their lives to substance abuse. Tomorrow night, September 18th, at the Middle High School, starting at 6:30. And my next selectmen's office hours, my monthly office hours, will be next Tuesday, September 24th, from 6:00 to 7:00, right here in Town Hall, right in the meeting room, right next door to the selectmen's meeting room. So if you have anything you'd like to discuss, stop by, again, from 6:00 to 7:00, next Tuesday, September 24th. Thank you.
I've got a couple of things. One is that it is the end of the 10-year contract with Comcast, and we are entering negotiations for a new contract with Comcast. There'll be a public hearing in this, in this room, Thursday, this week, Thursday night at 7:00. And it's a public hearing with the intention of hearing from citizens about how they feel about Comcast, things that we can take to the negotiations to try to improve, and, you know, as we get into the contract. So that is Thursday night here at 7:00. It will be televised as well. Also, the MMA has two legislative meetings coming up. One is a legis, part of the legislative breakfast meetings for locally for us, it's October 4th in Halifax, at the Halifax Town Hall, at, I don't know if it gives a time here.
8:00.
8:00, thank you very much. At 8:00, so that for those members that are interested, this was, should have been mailed out to everybody, you should have all got a copy of it, so feel free to sign up for that. And then also, there is a meeting on Saturday, September 21st, where the mass selectmen's associ, this is going to be held in Lakeville at the police station, and this is going to be at 8:30 on Saturday, September 21st, and it's a discussion of housing choices and housing opportunities in Massachusetts. So that both of those are available to all of us, Bob?
I'm going to that one.
Okay. And so I just wanted to make sure that everyone had seen those opportunities and that those are available to us to attend. And then the last thing I just wanted to touch on was, when they began deconstruction of the playground yesterday, Facebook came alive, as it is wont to do. And again, I extend my apologies to those who took to Facebook to honestly express their disappointment at not having had notice ahead of time. But at the same time, I was dismayed yet again, similar to the Russian-style Facebook tactics that took place back during the public hearing on the COA addition to the library, where Facebook just took off, got nasty, it got filthy, the town administrator was raked through the coals, and I was, I was just completely taken aback. I don't know how we're going to get people to run for public office in this town that doesn't have some sort of an agenda, if that's what their family and friends is going to be exposed to. I believe in free speech, but I believe in, I was always taught there's such a thing as responsible free speech. Yeah, you have the right to say anything you want, but you've got the moral obligation to speak the truth, and to do so to treat your fellow human beings with dignity, and not tear them a new one, just because you feel comfortable doing that behind a keyboard. I am really disappointed with the way it took off. I give, I give thanks to Peter Allegrini, who is the, one of the administrators on Carver Helping Carver. He took down a lot of the filth that showed up there. And I just hope that we as a town, I, my advice to everyone is get off of, don't listen to, don't pay attention to anything you hear on Facebook, because it's probably not accurate. That's my attitude, whether it's national politics or local politics. I just am so disappointed at the tenor of the conversation that's taking place in town on Facebook, you know, we're inciting riots out there, in a town that fiscally is being compared to one of the best fiscally-run towns, you know, on the South Shore. And all of us put in our time and our effort, and I have no problem if someone disagrees with something I say or do, or something the board does, but do it with dignity, do it with respect. So that's, that's my, that's my, my point. Request to establish qualifications for elected office via special act to submit. Corey Sori, Bob, did you want to address this? I know this was something you had spoken to earlier.
Yeah, I'd like to actually respond about you, what you're saying about Facebook. All right, I disagree, because I'm the one that started it, and my feelings on that is how I found out.
Oh, Bob, I'm not contest, I'm not contesting that. I'm talking about the length other people took it to with their dropping F-bombs on the town administrator. If you're telling me you think that's appropriate?
And I understand that, and I also.
Well, then it's wrong. Can you say it's wrong?
It's wrong for the people to say that stuff, but if you're having a decent conversation to let people know what's going on.
If it's a reasonable conversation, I have no problem with it. But Bob, that's not the tenor of what turned out yesterday. It got filthy yesterday.
It got filthy because people weren't notified.
I don't, it's not, it's not a reason to be able to tell someone they're effing whatever, Bob. There's no excuse for that behavior. You think it's okay to drop an F-bomb on the town administrator on Facebook?
I think people have freedom of speech, okay?
Oh, but with no responsibilities, they can say anything they want.
So what I want you to understand is that Facebook is a different venue. Facebook, you can do different things on different sites, say things and do things on different sites, okay? What was stated with the vulgarity is wrong. I'm going to tell you right now, it was wrong. You can have an intelligent conversation on Facebook with different people, all right, and not know that it's not 100% accurate, okay? My feeling with the playground issue is this, the town went ahead and posted on our town website when it was going to be closed for drill testing.
Bob, I've already taken responsibility for this. I don't know what else you want. I failed, I failed this board in asking for notification. I don't know what else I can say. I did it wrong. I made a mistake. What else do you want me to say?
There's nothing I want you to say. I'm responding to what you're saying about Facebook, okay? That's what I'm responding to.
Okay.
I understand your anger, all right, I understand that, and that's yelling. All right, and what the town administrator said to me.
But Bob, let's not get into that, okay?
But I wasn't.
My whole point is that Facebook is an abomination, the way it's being utilized, where people will say anything they want about anybody they want, and no one is, it's, you know, they should open it up as defamation of character. I mean, it's incredible, I don't believe a thing I see on Facebook. It's probably the Chinese, the Russians, and the North Koreans putting it out there, even for our local news. I mean, I, I've been doing this for a long time. I've gone through Speak Out in the Carver Reporter, I've gone through Fix Carver, this is the absolute worst I've seen it, where people feel they can just rip public officials a new one, and again, I worry about what's going to happen in the future, when people can just take people to task and rip them a new one, and who's going to run unless they're people with an agenda, with a specific agenda that are out there doing that. Bob, you and I agree in an awful lot of things. I think we're basically saying the same thing here. There has to be, there is a limit to free speech. You cannot get cruel and treat people with a lack of respect. You can disagree, but you can do it with dignity and with respect. Anyway, maybe, maybe we disagree, but. Corey Sori?
All right. So the Corey Sori, we just created a policy, all right, and added the Sori. My thought process in this, and I've actually got a couple of comments against this from different people. My thought process is, we as elected officials, we do meet with senior citizens. We have one-on-one conversations with them, okay? We also turn around and have discussions with kids, all right? Elected officials here in the positions that we have, maybe not all elected officials, but I think as elected officials here in this town, the public has a right to know if you have a criminal background with passing bad checks, all right, not being fiscally responsible, because this is some of the things that we will end up having to do, all right? We need somebody who can pass that, all right? And then the Sori, the whole sex offender, we don't want a sex offender here representing us, okay?
Well, I guess it would be up to people to vote.
Well, it's up to people to vote. But that's my feeling is, I don't want to see that, okay? And if we go through this route where someone goes ahead and, having forbid, passes, all right, the state legislator and says, okay, and even town meeting, but we could turn around and start something new here for the rest of the towns to look at and say, you know what, maybe this is a good idea, maybe it's not, all right? But at least if something happens on your record and you say, well, listen, yeah, I did something stupid when I was younger, all right? Everyone does something stupid when they're younger, okay? But public has a right to know who's going to be sitting in this office and representing them. So that was, that's my, my only thought process on it, and not everyone agrees, and I've taken that hit with the people, and they don't think it's right, but I figured I'd put it out there and see what everyone else thinks.
Other comments?
I have a couple of questions. Bob, who would, who would apply for this Corey? Would it be the town applying for Corey's on, on whoever wanted to run for office, or the individual?
Mike, my feeling is, is that as soon as you fill out the paperwork to be an elected official, to go through the petition part, to go ahead and name your nominations, okay, once you turn it in, you've now turned around and said, I want to take this position. All right, at that point, you would then turn around and submit, here's a Corey form, have him fill it out, we submit it in, all right?
So the town would apply for the Corey?
The town would have to.
So correct me if I'm wrong, and Michael, maybe you or Elaine know, I looked into the Corey law a little bit. I believe that under the current Corey laws, if someone did that and it came back, was the correct language I'm looking for, less than positive, I don't think the town can release that information. Am I, am I correct?
I think that there's clearly a lot of laws that tie into this, that should be fully vetted out before any action is taken. Bob has a direction he wants to go, and I don't think anyone's arguing with that direction. It's just what are the consequences of doing that? What's the liability of the town? What's the authority of the town? Is this just for people running for selectmen? Is this for selectmen's school committee? Is this now for state rep? Is this now for governor? You know, where do you draw the line and what is it going to do? So I think there's a bunch of questions that need to be asked about this, as to whether or not, and then the board needs to determine if you want to spend the legal effort into trying to get all of these constitutional questions asked, or if there's another, you know, if this has been done someplace else, then you have a model to look at. But this is going to be a constitutional issue that's going to require a lot of legal analysis, in my opinion, as to what can be done and what can't be done, and even with that, as to whether it goes to the state legislature, and, you know, they're going to have a million questions.
Mr. Dunn?
Is it your idea that this would just be elected positions, Bob?
Yes.
Okay, so what about?
Well, they're employees, they go through it anyways, but I mean.
What about the finance committee? How about the conservation commission? We have an awful lot of boards and whatnot that aren't elected, that to me, logically, if you're going to subject elected officials to it, and with your case, interacting with seniors, that means everybody that's on the directors of council of aging would have to go through it. With kids, you know, in that case, the whole fire department would have to go through a Corey investigation. I mean, that just seems, they do already?
I think they might.
Okay, well, I, it just means, you know, and what is the expense on this? I mean, I'm not going to disagree with it outright. I mean, I'm not gonna disagree with it outright because I don't know enough about it. Like Michael says, you know, it's gonna take a lot of legal research and we may find that, yeah, it can be done reasonably cheaply without infringing on people's rights. I keep getting into, you know, people's right to privacy and there being information in there that don't reach the level of a crime or anything, but like you said, something that happened when you were, back when you're in your youth at 21 or 22, that was a minor little thing, but you decide, you don't really want that out and you're gonna go ahead and expose the whole, you know, to the whole world with it? I, 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 I have initial queasy feeling about it, but I'd have to hear a lot more, especially from a couple, uh, legal town council. And I'd also maybe check with Susan and, uh, Senator Pacico to see if anybody, if they know of anybody else in the state that does this or get their, you know, see how they think the legislature would, would react, because it's gonna have to go to them to purr approval. That's just my thought.
When, uh, when I first, uh, heard this and I talked to Bob earlier, I actually, I, I support the concept. I think this is a good idea. I did talk to Chief Dufulley later this afternoon and he's unclear as to how much of the information can be publicly disseminated. For instance, if an employer runs a Corey, they can only keep it to themselves. They're not allowed to tell the rest of the employee population. So that, that goes back to, uh, the idea that we probably need to vet this a little bit to find out, because if it turns out that, you know, the town, the, the, the information come to the town, but then they can't do anything with it, then it almost defeats the purpose of what we're trying to do.
Right.
Uh, and however, what we did find out through the process is that we ourselves, uh, cannot set limitations on how to run for office. It would have to be special legislation. Uh, so that I would ask that I guess we start with town council and ju- and understanding the concept of what we wanna do and say, if we wanted to establish a, uh, prerequisite that someone has to do a Corey check and Sori check when they take out papers, what would hap- what's, what can, what level of dissemination can happen with the results when they come back? I mean, and I know in our business, Mark, with, uh, mo- uh, motor vehicle reports, you know, employers do them on drivers to find out if they have speeding tickets or DUIs. Uh, that has to be contained just to the employer, uh, and so, and again, and it's, it's probably for privacy issues. I like the idea that if someone has a criminal record, that we, we can know about it. Um, but just to be practical, if it turns out that, you know, we can know, but we can't tell anybody, then it almost defeats the purpose of what we're trying to do. So if we could start by asking KP Law to do some investigation?
Also, who does this investigation? I know the individual fills out a form, but then who does all the researches?
Corey, Corey checks it on the state level, don't they?
Yes.
Goes through our office, we then follow it, but it takes time to do that, there's a cost.
So you, you, you get access to, you see all the personal information? You, is it a way you get qualified? I guess you have to be a qualified personnel to do it?
She is.
Okay.
Yeah, and the other thing to consider, his Corey's have been known to come back with errors on them. And I'd hate to see someone running for office who had a Corey come back with an error, but that impacted the election, so that's.
Or their livelihood.
Or their livelihood, correct.
So just to give you an example of the process of a Corey Sori, so you would have to fill out the form, the results will come back to me if it came back unfavorable. Um, see if it's for a position in town, like you said earlier, that information would have to stay with me. Um, if it was for, for example, like Little League, the information will go to the designated party.
At the Little League?
It wouldn't be what the results were. It would be that it was an unfavorable decision.
Okay.
Uh, and in order to get to that point, uh, in our core Corey policy, it does state the process, so if an unfavorable decision did come back before anybody found out, the, uh, person who got Corey'd would be notified. They'd have the opportunity to appeal that and bring in proof that whatever the decision was, whatever the, the mark is on their record, um, was wrong and they would have the opportunity to prove that. So it is possible.
So all you get is favorable or unfavorable? You don't find out what the effect?
No, you find out exactly what it is.
Oh, you, you, you would?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. But then you just pass on favorable or unfavorable?
In consultation with the police chief, yes.
You should probably submit one of those through her so she can see the results.
So I guess a couple of things here is that, you know, I think when Bob brought this up is that, you know, there may be an opportunity for a request to be made for, you know, anyone running for office to voluntarily do it. And, you know, if some people chose to do it and some people chose not to do it, you might have a better luck of success on that. And, and I guess what I wanna caution is, again, I mentioned, there's gonna be some legal constitutional analysis that we'd have to put into this, charting a new path. Uh, but more importantly is that just because something may appear on the surface to be a good idea, is that it may not be implementable. And, uh, I say that, that the town's already gone through the process of passing a home rule legislation on, uh, for 30Bs for being able to count, uh, some of our villages in those. And that was something that passed pretty overwhelmingly by town meeting. State legislature didn't take it up. They had it there, just never got a vote. And, um, so again, going through this effort is, do you have, do you think there's a likelihood of success that the state legislature would do it? Or should you be spending your time on other things that are actually accomplishable in the town versus something that the legislature may never even want to entertain?
And just to comment on, on what Michael said, I, I guess you could implement a, a system where people voluntarily pull the Corey when they, when they pulled papers, but if you required that, then there's a fee to pull that Corey. And now you're charging someone a fee to run for public office. And I have to think that's unconstitutional, so.
Well, again, I, I would, I would, I would like to ask council to explore, it starts with dissemination. If there are limits on the dissemination of the result, then it defeats the purpose of what we're trying to do.
Correct.
So, uh, if we could just start by asking town council how Corey works, if, when the, when the results come back, what level of dissemination are we allowed to share with the public at large? And if it turns out it has to be contained with just the person that gets it here in town hall, that defeats the purpose of what we're trying to do and we pass on it. If it turns out that there are options, then we proceed to the next level of the vetting.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out how to narrow the scope because I could see this thing having multiple.
All, all we wanna know right now is, from town council, is that if, 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 let's say this, we, we put it through, it passes town meeting and the state legislature passes it, when the information comes back from the Corey check, who is entitled to see it? And is it limited? Because if it's limited, if it's not allowed to be publicly disseminated, then it defeats the whole purpose of what we're trying to do.
So if, if I could, just to, I, I think to frame this question for the attorneys is, I'm gonna ask them if a, if elect, if people running for office voluntarily do this.
Well, let's start with that.
Let's start with that.
Yeah.
Because then let's see how we would disseminate the information.
Right, because the dissemination of the information is key, whether, you know, you get into all the other stuff about charging for it and whatnot, you know, we could say the town will pick up the fee for that.
Correct.
That's, that's, those are other problems to solve. The very first one is, what is the public dissemination of the results from a public official that, that's running for office? And if it turns out it's really narrow and can't be made public, then that defeats the purpose of what we're trying to do.
Okay.
Okay? All right, next, town hall meeting discussion, also into KP Law, I believe. Did we get some feedback from town council?
Uh, have not been able to get that yet, uh, but I think this was, I, I guess the question that we're, we're trying to understand here is, is this something to take comments or is this gonna be a dialogue back and forth on random topics?
I think the way it was envisioned was that the board would set a meeting, uh, maybe over at the fire station or something, and we'd have no agenda. People could just come and sit in the audience and ask us questions. We would respond. And as that was sort of discussed, uh, the question came up, are you running into open meeting law violations? If three of the members of the board suddenly are discussing a topic that hadn't been brought up and all of a sudden they seem to be coming to a consensus, uh, around something, maybe, you know, someone mentions the urban renewal process or whether there should or shouldn't be eminent domain and all of a sudden you got members of the board all in agreement that maybe it should, uh, there's a danger there where we could be in violation. As opposed to just sitting here and it's just an extended citizen participation where people come up, speak their piece, another person comes up and we're there for an hour and a half just listening to people talk. And the idea was for it to be interactive, that we could go back and forth with people. But that's where the danger comes in, that if some sort of consensus forms with the board, not to, not to mention the fact of having a, a public meeting without an agenda, I think probably raises issues just off the bat. And so that, then, you know, is, so the question for town council is, given what we're trying to do, is there an acceptable format where someone asks a question, but they have to ask a specific selectman and no other selectman can respond? Uh, and, um, and, and you know, so the same, only one selectman's responding to one question as opposed to other selectmen piping in on the same question? Or if, if we're advertising it as a, maybe, maybe there's a rule, uh, maybe you can check with the AG's office, there's a rule that says if to have something like that, it's perfectly okay. But we, we, I, I wanna make sure we don't run afoul of the open meeting law in doing this. I, I thought it was a very simple thing. We just, you know, you, you see them on CNN with the political candidates all the time and they're walking around taking questions, but it's only one of them, one of them, as opposed to five of us.
Another question I'd have is, you know, this is another one of those, it, it sounds good in theory, but when you get down to the nuts and bolts of it and how to do it, it gets a little murky. Um, if it's, you know, the fear I have is somebody, not that anybody would do it in town, would be showing up and just lobbing bombs at us. And would we be allowed to respond to it? Because personally, if we're just sitting here, you know, if they're turning it into a meeting of free speech so they can say anything they want about us or to us or to individuals, then, no, no, I want my right for free speech to go ahead and respond. And would that be allowed?
So I think where this is gonna end up is, it's gonna really, uh, be the responsible of, of the chairman slash moderator to facilitate this. And, you know, you couldn't have the chairman and more than one other selectman commenting on something. You certainly would wanna set up some established rules ahead of time, that there's no personal attacks. This is for topics in the town that you'd wanna discuss and, um, I think as the chair could, you know, see if there's any particular selectman that would wanna respond to it and allow the chairman to kinda have the privilege of, you know, framing the question so that it's, it's properly framed and then having that dialogue back. But I think, I think the big issue is gonna be making sure that there is no appearance of a, of, um, deliberation happening on a particular topic. If you can avoid the double deliberation, I think we'll be fine. I'll confirm that with town council. Uh, as far as the advertisement of that, it would be a public forum to discuss any topic in the town, but no deliberations will take place.
I mean, I'd like to think that we're not the first ones to think of this, that it's happened elsewhere, so that maybe there's some precedent in terms of how you do it.
You see a lot of times mayors actually do this type of thing and they'll just have a sit-down, but again, it's a month, it's a mayor, yeah.
So I just, I just wanna make sure we don't run afoul of any open meeting law violations. I'd like to do it, but I wanna make sure we do it right.
Well, I have a question. So we, we held a, a cer- a seminar over there at the fire station. Where it was pretty much a free rein discussions for it. How did we get around that? Because we didn't know all the topics that were there.
That, that's the one run by Jeff Nutting?
Yeah.
The one, I, I guess because it was advertised.
It was all establishing goals and objectives. It was all based upon goals and objectives. You didn't determine whether you're gonna build a new DPW facility, you know, I mean, you didn't get into any of that type of deliberation. It was focused on goals and objectives.
And as I recall, there was a questionnaire that went out previous to that, right? What they're, the way we were sort of, we sort of made suggestions.
And that's what he used as his.
He had an outline that he followed, yeah. Totally different.
Uh, I mean, yeah, okay. All right, we'll go to the town administrator update.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, just a couple of quick updates. Um, uh, as Mr. Bellman mentioned, there is the Zico's group that's having the municipal auction. Um, that, that information is available on the website. By definition, a, a auction of public property is to regain the back taxes that were done, um, so that, um, it's selling something that the town owns right now and trying to recoup its back taxes that it's taken through foreclosure. Um, in addition to that, um, the, uh, new playground is moving forward. Um, all but one of the catch basins have been installed, so most of the underground drainage system has been installed, uh, next door. Um, as the contractor was going through the work, uh, we identified that, uh, one of the Little League fields was built on an old Little League field, which actually meant that it didn't drain well because it had, you know, topsoil built under the sand, so it was actually acting like a clay barrier. So that's all been removed and replaced with sand. Um, and it did that for both facilities, so that's coming along. Uh, we have, uh, most of the material's gonna be delivered later this month. Uh, we have, uh, filled up a quarter of the, uh, police station, uh, I'm sorry, the old fire station with material that we're gonna be reusing from the old playground, which includes, uh, slides and a lot of the canopies. Uh, so that's over there to be reprocessed as well as a bunch of the benches and the furniture. Uh, so, so that is underway. We are, will be in construction of the playground facility in October. Uh, the goal is to get that completed by October. Um, the only challenge that we're gonna have is just, it needs to be weather con- uh, contingent, uh, based upon putting down the rubberized, uh, material at the end of the construction. So we are moving forward with that. Um, one of the things that when we took down the old, uh, elementary school, there was some playground equipment, uh, that came down. And at the old elementary school, um, we as a town couldn't reuse that from a liability standpoint, um, because it was no longer ADA compliant from a public standpoint. Uh, so that was disposed of properly at the time by the contractor. However, uh, there were, uh, some ni- uh, people in town that complained that they could have reused that in their own personal property and didn't want to see it thrown away as surplus property. Uh, that being said, and considering that, uh, Carver likes to repurpose things, given our farming heritage that's here, um, we did disassemble, uh, the playground and tried to salvage as much of the units and pieces that we could. Uh, none of the poles were able to be salvaged because they were embedded in concrete, but some of the structures that are not gonna be reused are. We have staged those all back, uh, by the water treatment area and, um, there is a cost to dispose of that material. However, uh, without any objections from the board of selectmen and as the chief procurement officer, what my intent to do would be for that is that so-called salvaged material is to, in essence, turn that over to the recreation committee and let them work with the public on seeing if there's maybe a campground around here or some other people that might want some pieces to it. They would have to, you know, sign a, a waiver that they're taking it their own responsibility as salvaged material, uh, but if they wanted to go out and buy the proper poles and assemble the stuff, it'd be up to them to do it. Uh, but I just didn't wanna, uh, throw it away this time like we did last time. I wanted to give people the opportunity of repurposing that. So unless I hear any objections, that's the direction I'm gonna go on that, because that is within my authority to do that, but I didn't wanna take that step without at least sharing that information with the board. Okay, hearing none on that, um, let's see. Um, I also just wanna thank, uh, many of the volunteers that worked on, um, um, the process next door. Um, that will end up saving the entire project, uh, somewhere, uh, just shy of a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we did this identical process for the fire station. Uh, we took the site, we leveled the site, um, we prepared the site, we stripped out all the unsuitable soils. And as a result of that, when it went out to the contractors, the contractors were doing the site work, had no unintensive consequences or didn't put any contingencies into the site plan because it was pretty well laid out. Uh, that's what we're gonna be doing on this. Uh, I anticipate that a bunch of the, the trees and the, and the rubbing, uh, of the site will take place next week. Uh, after that's done, we are gonna be removing the mulch because it's considered unsuitable soils, uh, that's in the area, uh, so, and then potentially even replacing that with some other suitable soils we may have in town. We're gonna do a calculation as to whether or not that makes sense to do. Uh, so that area is going to be, uh, again, cleaned off. What we'll then do is have the surveyor come in, resurvey the property with the unsuitable soils removed. That'll go into the bid packet and that'll reduce some, some significant savings to the town. Again, identical to what we did over at the, uh, police, the, the fire station. Again, identical to what we did over at the police, the fire station. So, again, just for, for notice, is that the trees will be most likely removed in the next week or two.
Michael, can you just so the public is aware, just enunciate what weather conditions would prevent us from putting down that rubberized coating?
Sure.
On the new playground?
No, a very good point, is that the rubber needs to set for at least 24 hours, preferably 36. With that, it needs to set in a temperature above 40 degrees. So as long as we can, you know, coordinate this, so we cannot get a cold snap, and a cold snap's fine, it's just we would have to schedule that and try to plan this after a cold snap with a, a look ahead in the weather, and, and we have a selectman that can help us forecast that when we get closer to that. Just, just saying, that we would then be able to put down the rubber, the rubberized material.
You do realize that later you go in October, the harder it is to get any time that's not below freezing, especially at night, so you're going to have, you could run into a problem with your 24 hours.
That is a concern that we have, but, you know, again, some of these delays that got us to this point were outside of our control.
Again, I just want to make sure you're with me.
Yep, we're, we're doing that. I will say too, is that earlier on, we were looking to have the playground as designed by the architect and improved by the playground committee, to have kind of a mix of mulch and the resilient surface. I think by doing the work that we did yesterday and today, and some other cost savings we're doing, we will hopefully be in a position where we can make all of the area under all of the apparatus, the rubberized, the resilient rubberized surface. So, you know, these savings do, do come into play for the betterment of the community. And, yes, we are thinking about every child, and we want to make sure that this playground that they're going to have is going to be exceptional. And, again, the playground committee, the police station building committee, and all interested parties have been working, you know, to the greater good of the community and the kids.
Just something that may be further down the line than you're willing to talk about, but I'm assuming there will be a dedication ceremony for the new playground? And are we going to have a groundbreaking ceremony for the new police station? But that would probably be next spring?
I don't know, so yes and yes and no. So let me, let me go through each one of those. I've got three questions there. The first is, yes, we will be having a ceremony for the playground. You know, we did get that moving in pieces, so I'm not sure if we're going to have a, I need to talk to the recreation committee about how they want to address that. The same thing applies to the police station building committee, is that we will be having a groundbreaking on that. Schedule yet to be determined. I would estimate that it's going to be somewhere in late October or up through Thanksgiving, tentatively in that timeframe. So, yes, we are going to have one, but no, it's not going to be pushed to next year for the groundbreaking for the police station.
Preferably not between the 8th and the 21st of November.
Well, that depends upon how accurate your weather forecast is. So, again, that's going on. Where we are with the, the design, the design has been approved, the bid documents are in process. They're going to be released later this month. And they're going to be out for sub-bids in October, and then for the GC, the general contractor, to provide their final bids by the end of October. And then for the committee to review the bids, go through the qualified bidders, and then actually vote to approve a final plan.
Was approved by the planning board?
The planning board, I think, is going to be voting at their next meeting to authorize their piece. The planning board did close the public hearing, so they had the information they needed to, to move forward. And they've already had their design review committee with all of, their tech review committee, so that's all been taken care of on all the issues that were addressed. I want to just mention briefly that with Dan Badger, we're still working on this Carver Quality of Life project, or department, or overview of, again, looking at all the departments that are, that are within the town structure, that aren't in the finance department, aren't in the school department, aren't in the operation and maintenance department, and aren't in the permitting department. So any of those other departments, recreation, council on aging, library, earth removal, agricultural committee, all of those, we're, we're looking at and trying to figure out how we can provide better services to the residents, given the success we've been having with all those other committees. It's, it's now time to pull those together and see what makes sense. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We do have something that came in that was not reasonably anticipated by the chair 48 hours in advance of the meeting. It was an application for a one-day special license permit from St. John the Baptist Club for a pig roast at 53 Silver Street, sent in by Janice Gomes, for October 12th, 2019, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. Expectation of 100 people to attend, open to the public, nonprofit, and they're looking for an, the license for sale of all alcoholic beverages. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve.
Second. Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. The appointment of James Walsh as replacement for the 2019-2020 Serpent member. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move we appoint.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
This is our town planner.
Yes.
Correct. Just want to make sure that people know, it's going to be our town planner.
Given no discussion, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Elaine, would you want to walk us through this next section on the executive session minutes?
Before you do that, can I just, there's one more quick thing I wanted to give an update on, is that we had applied for a MassWorks grant for progress that's happening with the Route 44 project. Right now, they have acquired all properties, or have under agreement all properties, but for the Boroski property. And the developer is working with an end user, and is trying to work through a real estate transaction with them for doing a distribution facility. And, again, we did apply for a MassWorks grant. I was in contact today with one of the deputy secretaries in that department, and will continue to keep the board updated on the progress with that grant. That grant would be utilized for providing a new connection to Route 58 and realigning Mattel, Mattello Street to make that connection. So that is in process. I don't have any final news on that, but it is being actively reviewed, and, you know, we're waiting to see what happens with the private transaction that the developer's
That's the urban renewal plan, just to let people know.
Right. Elaine, if you could just sort of let us know what this next section refers to?
Sure. You guys had been asking about the executive session minutes. So those were sent to town council for their review, and they review, review them for content that can be released to the public and content that cannot be released to the public. And they've come back with their opinion that all of the minutes, except for one set, should not be released for the public, and they gave their reason for each one and why it should not be released.
And if any of us were interested to get a little more clarification, we could ask for more specificity on individual minutes?
I outlined it here in the agenda.
Okay.
What the reason was for each executive session minutes.
There's an email in our package.
So at this point then, is there only one, one to approve?
Right. So you can approve all of the minutes? There's only one that will be released?
You would approve them all.
Okay.
And then you take a second vote to only release one. So you're approving them all as executive session, they stay in executive session, they don't leave executive session until you approve to release them from executive session. So in essence, you're approving that they're correct representation of the, the meeting, it stays in executive session.
And which is the one that can be released?
April 3rd.
April 3rd, okay. So I mean, we could make a motion saying, voting for the release of all the executive session, of, for the approval of the executive session minutes, but the release of only the April 3rd.
Right.
I cannot vote on the two meetings from June 26th, as I was not in attendance for those two.
Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve all of the executive session minutes and, and release only the April 3rd, 2018 executive session minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it. What's the pleasure of the board on the minutes of, it should be 8/6/19?
Correct.
I move we approve.
Second.
Further discussion?
Yeah. On the 6th, it had here, on the second page, request for one-day license for bartending for Sportsman Club. I recuse myself from that vote. And it says 5/0.
Okay. So a motion to approve, subject to making that correction?
To 4/0, yes.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. What's the pleasure of the board for the minutes of September 3rd?
I can't do anything, because I wasn't there.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
September 3rd. I don't, I don't believe I was there either.
You weren't. So how do we?
You have to table it.
We'll have to table this, table that one for the next board meeting.
Yep.
All right, we have a joint meeting with the school committee here in this room, a week from Thursday, on September 26th, at 7:00. That will be a televised meeting. This is part of the regular joint meetings that we've been having periodically with the school committee. However, I think there is, there are a couple of items that we actually have to act on. Are they budget-related, Michael? And I thought that's one of the reasons we were up here, is that there was something that was, that wasn't just a normal informal conversation.
You guys both voted on the green communities piece for the vehicles. Yeah, I think there was, there was one budget item, yes.
Right, okay. So just a reminder, a week from Thursday. Also, just, I'll just remind everybody that two nights from now, in this room, is the Comcast cable public hearing for the renewal of the Comcast contract. And then we have our meetings, our regular meetings, on October 1st and 15th, November 5th and 19th, and December 3rd and 17th. With that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.